Testing.
Good evening, everyone. Meeting called to order at approximately 7:08 PM. Mr. Rosado, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Azalina?
Here.
Mrs. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Mountain?
Here.
Mrs. Peck?
Here.
Ms. Perrine? Mr. Bertuz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
If you'll quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. We'll all rise to salute the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Westwood Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time and place thereof: Westwood Borough Hall, Westwood Public Library, Township of Washington Administration Building, Township of Washington Free Public Library, The Record, Community Life, and the Pasca Press. Ms. Mountain, can I get a motion to minute approval, please? Second? Ms. Peck? Mountain Peck? Any discussion? Mr. Rosado, roll call, please.
Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mountain?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Bertuz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion, carry.
Thank you. We're going to move along to superintendent's report. Dr. McQueeney.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Good evening, everyone. As we close out October and move into November, I want to begin by thanking our staff, students, and families for a strong and positive start to the school year. The first marking period has been filled with energy, collaboration, and meaningful learning across all of our schools. Next week, we will hold parent-teacher conferences for our pre-K through fifth-grade students and families on Monday, November 3rd through Wednesday, November 5th. These will be early dismissal days for pre-K to five students only, allowing time for afternoon and evening conferences. These meetings are an important opportunity for families and teachers to connect, reflect on progress, and work together to support each child's growth. I want to thank our teachers and principals for the care and preparation that go into making these conferences successful for everyone involved. Please also note that the district will be closed on Thursday, November 6th, and Friday, November 7th for the annual NJEA Teachers' Convention. I hope everyone enjoys the long weekend and returns recharged for the weeks ahead. This evening, I will also be presenting the 2024-2025 Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Self-Assessment Annual Report. Each school's school and safety climate team completes the self-assessment each year to evaluate how well we are implementing the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. As required, these results are being presented publicly tonight for board approval before they are submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education. The scores for each school are listed on the agenda, and anyone wishing to comment may do so during the public comment portion of the meeting. I want to thank our principals and school teams for their continued focus on fostering safe, inclusive, and respectful school environments for all students. As we review tonight's agenda, I want to take a moment to connect several of this evening's items to our district goals for the 2025-2026 school year, which center on elevating instructional quality, improving attendance, strengthening safety and security, building professional capacity, and enhancing communication and visibility of district progress. Under Goal One, elevate instructional quality and improve student achievement, tonight's agenda includes several items that reflect our continued commitment to strong instruction in student learning. Shortly after my report, Dr. Calderon and Ms. Velez will present the district's NJSLA and DLM results, providing an overview of student performance and the instructional priorities that will guide our work this year. We're also recognizing our College Board National Recognition Scholars and National Merit Commended Students, who his accomplishments reflect the academic rigor and dedication of both our students and staff. In addition, the approval of Title I Advisor and Coordinator positions at the middle and high school levels will expand targeted supports for students, while professional learning opportunities funded through Title II funds will strengthen curriculum alignment and instructional consistency across the district. Together, these initiatives ensure that teaching and learning remain at the heart of our district's mission. Under Goal Two, improving student attendance, our efforts continue to focus on early intervention, consistent communication with families, and the creation of engaging learning environments that encourage students to be present and involved each day. While there are no specific motions related to attendance on this agenda, the strategies being implemented across schools through professional development, student support teams, and family outreach remain central to our work this year as we continue to reduce chronic absenteeism and support the success of every learner. Under Goal Three, strengthening safety and security, several important items tonight reinforce our commitment to providing a safe and supportive environment for students and staff. The board will be asked to approve the 2025-2026 School and District Safety and Security Plan, which was developed in consultation with law enforcement and community partners to ensure that our procedures, training, and emergency responses remain up to date. The Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Self-Assessment also underscores our ongoing focus on climate and culture, while the Designation of the Week of Respect and School Violence Awareness Week highlights the proactive steps our schools take to teach empathy, inclusion, and personal responsibility. And finally, the report of recent bus evacuation drills demonstrates our ongoing attention to preparedness and operational safety across all grade levels. Under Goal Four, build professional capacity and leadership pipelines, we continue to invest in our educators and grow leadership within the district. The Personnel Section includes the appointment of new teacher coordinators, team leaders, and senior teachers, roles that promote collaboration and shared leadership across our schools. Tonight's agenda also includes a wide range of professional learning experiences through NJPSA, NVCC, AMTNJ, and other professional organizations. These opportunities allow our staff to learn, reflect, and bring new strategies back to their classrooms. Finally, under Goal Five, enhance communication and visibility of district progress, this evening's agenda demonstrates our continued efforts to highlight student accomplishments and strengthen community connections. Student recognitions for our National Merit and College Board Scholars shine a light on academic excellence and the collaborative work that takes place between students, teachers, and families. The upcoming NJSLA presentation reflects our transparency in communicating student outcomes and instructional progress to our community, and the acceptance of several community donations, including technology upgrades and new equipment for our music program, demonstrates the strong partnership between our schools and local organizations that continue to enhance the educational experience for all students. In summary, tonight's agenda advances each of our district goals from strengthening instruction and ensuring safety to supporting staff growth and celebrating student success. I want to thank our board, our administrators, and our entire staff for their dedication and teamwork as we continue to provide the very best for our students and families. Thank you, and as always, go Cards!
Thank you, Dr. McQueeney. Now moving to my board presence report, the things I'd want to talk about every time we're out here are the students, I mean, the staff and the students. Dr. McQueeney does a good job covering that, and the student report takes care of that, so I feel like it would be redundant, but I will say this past week, we had the opportunity to go down to the New Jersey School Board Association Conference. It was amazing. It was done in AC. It was amazing to be around thousands and thousands of individuals, half of them being volunteers like ourselves, with a similar passion, like-mindedness, and a bunch of really great administrators. New Jersey's a really strong state. There's a lot of people working behind the scenes that are caring, pulling in the right direction. I want to thank Mr. Rosado, Dr. McQueeney, for making it happen, organized, structured, and allowing us the opportunity to do that. I wish there was a different time because I know a bunch of us, Ms. Mountain, myself, Ms. Azalina went, but I know just about everybody else wanted to go, but it's tough to take off of work and commit to that. But there's a lot of really good things going on. I just want to sing in praises and say thank you again, Mr. Rosado. So now on to my favorite part, as I always say, the students' report.
Preschoolers are excited to create their first make-believe theme. Classroom centers have been transformed into rooms of a home. The students love to pretend to raise their babies as they take care and cook for them, wash clothes, and build with pretend tools. This week, we welcomed our high school friends from the child development classes. These high schoolers will visit the integrated classrooms a few times a month to observe and interact with the preschoolers. The preschoolers love it when their older friends come to see them. Students are looking forward to celebrating Halloween with an in-school parade as well as classroom parties. Thank you to the preschool parent enrichment group for organizing a trunk-or-treat for our students.
Moving on to the elementary schools. During the Week of Respect, our elementary schools came together to celebrate kindness, respect, and positive choices in meaningful and memorable ways. At Jesse F. George School, students demonstrated the power of kindness and inclusion by creating a beautiful chain of love and kindness, with each link representing a thoughtful act, kind word, or moment of care. Berkeley Elementary hosted a school-wide Omega Man Assembly, focused on building a positive mindset, teamwork, making good choices, and standing up against bullying. Washington Elementary welcomed Abracadabra's iCare Assembly, where magician Mike inspired students with his story of overcoming bullying and reminded everyone to embrace what makes us us. At Brookside, students were equally inspired during the Be the Hero in You Assembly, led by Dynamo and Zaina from Omega Man and Friends, who taught students that being a hero means helping everyone respect others. Each school counselor also visited classrooms to lead lessons on how we can show respect for ourselves, others, and our school community. A special thank you goes to our counseling department for partnering with us on these important initiatives and helping make the Week of Respect a success across all of our schools.
In the middle school, October was a bustling and successful month for the middle school community. The month kicked off with a highly successful middle school club/activity fair, which fostered strong peer engagement and generated significant interest in all available clubs. Mid-month, the Week of Respect activities were successful. The guidance department started the week with a fun country theme, and various themes followed throughout the week for all students. To reinforce positive actions, the student council and administration teamed up for a What You Do Matters raffle, celebrating students caught doing something kind with tickets for a drawing. The middle school also embraced National Hispanic Heritage Month and Italian Heritage Month with weekly facts about famous inventors in our morning announcements. In partnership with the counseling team and administration, the school hosted its first Six Things for Sixth Grade Parents Night on October 22nd, which was a well-attended and informative. The middle school also acknowledged Red Ribbon Week, kicking it off with everyone wearing red on October 23rd, followed by the first advisory session in ELA classes. The student council brought back the popular Battle of the Classes, with students and staff enthusiastically embracing each daily event throughout the week. Finally, the PSO launched its Friday after-school pretzel sales and hosted a successful sixth-grade fall festival. PSO, with local donations from our community members, put together a wonderful display of scarecrows along the middle school grounds, which you can see on a walk past the school.
For district counseling, our district recognized the Week of Respect from October 6th to October 10th. Throughout this week, K through 12 schools highlighted positive character education through themed dress-up days, classroom activities, and discussions that encourage respect. Families were encouraged to continue car conversations at home about what respect looks like and feels like in daily life. Each day of the week featured a theme such as Team Up Against Bullying, Work It Out, and Cardinal Unity Day, to promote school spirit and respectful behavior. A special thank you to our Insight Health clinicians for hosting a district-wide presentation on understanding children's mental health on October 14th. We are grateful for our partnership with Insight to provide students with additional and wraparound mental health support. Students in grades 10 through 12 have participated in post-secondary admissions representative visits throughout September and October. To date, 35 colleges and universities have visited Westwood Regional High School, with 38 more visits scheduled through the end of November 2025. On October 16th, Sergeant Keller of the United States Marine Corps visited Westwood Regional High School. Our financial aid evening presentation will be recorded and shared with high school parents tomorrow, October 31st, to view for any who are unable to attend. Our district's school counseling newsletter, distributed quarterly, will go out and be posted on our website at the beginning of November.
Moving on to the high school and academics, our seniors kicked off the school year with their annual senior sunrise on September 29th. Grade 12 students gathered early in the morning to watch a beautiful sunrise and celebrate the beginning of their final year together. On September 30th, students who signed up to serve as Election Day poll workers participated in their official training session. They learned how to operate polling stations and gained insight into the election process. These students will put their training into practice when they work at the polls on Election Day. The high school administered the PSAT to all grade 10 and 11 students on October 15th. Grade 12 students were also given the opportunity to take an in-school SAT on October 22nd. We wish all of our students the best of luck as they await their scores. The high school counseling department will host a financial aid presentation tonight, October 30th. The presentation will be virtual and recorded for families who are unable to attend live. The high school celebrated New Jersey's Week of Respect, promoting a safe, respectful school environment from October 6th to 10th. Students enjoyed themed spirit days such as Pajama Day and Rhyme Without Reason Day, and the week concluded with an energetic pep rally organized by the student council. Grade 11 biology students participated in their annual Bronx Zoo field trip, where they explored various animal habitats. The experience was both educational and enjoyable for all. The counseling department has continued to bring valuable presentations to students. Ninth graders attended an anti-bullying assembly, while 11th graders participated in a mental health presentation, both of which provided important resources and discussions. Finally, students enrolled in advanced placement courses have begun registering for their May AP exams. Registration closes on November 5th, and students can find all necessary information in their email or on the college board website.
Moving on to athletics. Winter sports signups were held last week, Wednesday, October 22nd, for girls' basketball, boys' basketball, bowling, winter track, and wrestling. Throughout October and into November, our fall sports teams are celebrating the graduating seniors with individual senior nights. A big congratulations to all of our high school seniors who have dedicated numerous years to our sports programs. We wish them the best of luck in their future sports endeavors. Congratulations to the football team on winning their fourth consecutive SFC American Red Division title. The Cardinals also won the Bird Bowl Trophy by beating the Riverdale Golden Hawks 40 to 21 on Friday, October 24th. The win capped off an impressive 8-1 regular season campaign for the Cards, who will now host the Newton High School Braves tomorrow in the opening round of the Group II North One sectional playoffs. The Westwood Athletic Department is now accepting nominations for the Athletic Hall of Fame. The nominations will be accepted until December 15th, 2025. Congratulations to the girls' cross-country team for finishing third place in Bergen County Group C. Also, a big congratulations goes to senior Anthony Greco, who was named Super Football Conference's Young Man of the Year Award recipient for his outstanding community service and citizenship. We wish the best of luck to the football, volleyball, and both boys' and girls' soccer teams who qualified for their state tournaments.
Now for clubs. The Morgan's Message Club has been hosting dedication games for our fall sports teams. At each game, members held bake sales to raise funds for the Morgan's Message organization and shared a brief statement to raise awareness about Morgan's story and the importance of ending the stigma surrounding mental health and athletics. The club plans to continue these dedication games throughout the upcoming winter season. The environmental club organized a cleanup of the Woodcliff Lake reservoir. Approximately 30 students volunteered to collect and remove several pounds of trash, contributing to the club's ongoing efforts to protect and improve our local environment. The Westwood TV and Film Club continues to produce daily morning announcements, keeping students informed about school events and activities. In addition, the club recently invited local veterans for on-camera interviews, creating an educational opportunity for students and viewers. A sincere thank you to the veterans who took time to share their experience with our students. The Westwood Debate Team is off to an excellent start this season. Congratulations to all the team members who have earned awards at recent competitions. Keep up the great work. The National Art Honor Society held its annual pumpkin carving and painting event, which was once again a huge success. The National Honor Society continues to support academic excellence through its tutoring program for both middle and high school students. NHS members traveled to the middle school twice a month after school to provide academic assistance and are also available in the high school most Tuesdays and Thursdays during lunch.
In the performing arts, on October 26th, art and design students from the Westwood Regional High School attended the National Portfolio Day event at the Jacob Javits Center in New York City. At this annual event, students who were planning to pursue the visual arts in college are able to bring their portfolios and get them reviewed by leading universities from around the country, gaining important feedback on their artwork. Mrs. Grossman and Mrs. Duffus presented at the Art Educators of New Jersey's Annual Conference in Princeton, New Jersey, on Tuesday, October 28th. Their presentation highlighted the Westwood Regional School District's Neighborhood Expressions exhibition and gave the art teachers from across New Jersey tips on engaging the community through art. The Westwood Regional High School Band and Choir are getting ready for their winter concert, which will take place on December 10th at 7:00 PM. And finally, the Woodington Players are hard at work preparing for their production of 12 Angry Jurors. The amazing cast members will continue to perfect their craft throughout November, leading up to their performances on November 12th, 13th, and 15th. This concludes our report.
Mr. Isbud, Ms. Goldman, you guys are doing a great job. I hope you're enjoying your time up here. I hope you're enjoying your senior year. Take it in, take it slow, enjoy it. Thank you. Now, Mr. Rosado, Business Administrator's report.
Sure. So, we met with the district architects. We went over the punch list for the Washington School HVAC project, as that's coming to a close. We also began to finalize the George School HVAC project, which is, will be the next one coming up, happening during the summer. That is expected to go out to bid around November 12th and be up for board approval at the December 18th meeting. We began also discussing the Berkeley HVAC project due to the nature of this building, which consists of four different levels. It's going to be in, we're going to have to tackle this job in multiple phases to be able to accomplish this without interruption to the schools. So, we're designing a plan. We may have some work occur this year, this summer. We're not sure yet. We're trying to get some more input. I will follow up with the board on that. And the last thing I just want to mention, we're, it's that time of the year when we take our October 15th snapshot of district enrollment. Those numbers that we use when we finalize our annual state reports, that's used to determine state aid for the school district in the upcoming years. So, very busy time right now in the board and the business office. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Moving on to committee reports. Chairperson Azalina, can you handle the personnel and policy for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Garcia. We held our Personnel and Policy meeting on October 16th. We had a lot to talk about. The first thing that we did was, we went over and we had a comprehensive conversation with Dr. McQueeney about our CUSAC scores. This included how the scoring works, how the district self-scores, and all the other layers of how CUSAC comes in on the continuum. We were also able to go over personnel. This included our new Title I coordinators and advisor positions, which we are very excited to install, and Dr. McQueeney spoke about this. For policy, we discussed changes made to the Gifted and Talented policy. That's number 2464. This included new language about how students are admitted and retained into the Gifted and Talented program. We were also able to have a discussion about student clubs and initiatives with the focus on supporting our students and their aspirations. Finally, we were able, some of us were able to attend the School Board Association, and we were able to take incredible classes about AI in the classroom, public relations, innovative learning, and how to remain aboard that is focused on ethics. That is the end of my report. We will meet next month for another policy personnel meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Azalina. Finance and Facility, Chairperson Bertuz, please.
Finance and Facilities met on October 16th in attendance with Dr. McQueeney, Ms. Ravanetti, Mr. Rosado, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Peck, and myself. Mr. Rosado already gave an update on really what we discussed that day. I'll just add that we did discuss current and future projects at all the district buildings. The next meeting is November 11th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bertuz. On to Curriculum and Instruction. Chairperson Peck, please.
The curriculum committee met on October 16th. In attendance was myself, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Perrine, Ms. Mountain, Dr. McQueeney, Dr. Calderon, and Ms. Velez. Dr. McQueeney provided an update on the preliminary NJ, the New Jersey CUSAC District Performance Review, noting that the highest score for instruction and programming is 40%, with indicators 1 through 7 being county-populated. The committee also reviewed the Gifted and Talented policy, which is being updated for the first time in approximately five years, and is scheduled for first reading on the board agenda for tonight. Mrs. Velez gave a progress update on the New Jersey literacy mandate, highlighting the diligent work of K-5 teachers and administrators in completing the requirements, including parent notifications. She also shared details about a small group pilot program. Being conducted through Rutgers, the board would like to recognize the teachers who are volunteering their time to work in collaboration with the Rutgers Staff Developer to pilot this program. From Washington School, it was Amanda Giordano. Brookside, Kelly Golds, Marissa Raymond, Laura Jones, Jill Vaughn, Jordan Barafaldi. George School was Kim Kirkby, and Berkeley is Stephanie Lepore, Allison Siegel, and Sarah Stewart. They work during district-wide professional development days and during their planning time, both during and after school. Their passion and dedication to our students are sincerely appreciated. Finally, the committee and Dr. Calderon reviewed the final draft of the NJSLA presentation and discussed the ongoing planning process for next year's middle school scheduling and budgeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Peck. Hold on to that mic, because I'm going to ask you to read motions A and B, awards and recognitions. Dr. McQueeney and I will walk down. Dr. McQueeney and I will walk down.
Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolution be adopted. Whereas the College Board's National Recognition Program recognizes students who scored in the top ten percent of the PSAT NMSQT test takers in their high school, state's first-generation test takers, and/or state's rural and small-town test takers, or earn a three-plus or two on two or more distinct AP exams in the ninth and/or tenth grade, and earn a cumulative GPA of B-plus by the time of submission. Whereas, the Westwood Regional School District Board of Education does hereby commend Alfonso Alexander, Nicholas Aspar, Elliot Byer, David Brown, Anthony Caparelli, Isabella Casai, Grady Connolly, Madeline Di Piola, John Dillon, Sawyer Donnis, Kristen Doyle, Tristan Faraya, it's held on here, it says Faraya, Andrew Gavinco, Madeline Goldman, Paul Hackimian, Jackson Hannan, William Harry, Maya Hernandez, Madeline Ivy, Theodore Clem, Isabella Lamotta, Derek Lamankuis, Kai Muffet, Dante McCula, Natalie Mayhew, Crystal Ortiz, Ben Robinowitz, Zachary Risbad, Elizabeth Rogers, Max Silverstein, Thomas Smith, Alina Solodo, Leah Tatis, Elizabeth Throuth, Leonardo Viana. Now therefore be it resolved that the Westwood Regional Board of Education hereby congratulates these students for this accomplishment, directs the secretary to include this resolution in the official minutes of the Board of Education, and directs the Superintendent of Schools to present the student with a suitable certificate of recognition.
Can I get a second? All favor? Rosado?
Can we turn it down now?
Motion, B, motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolution be adopted. Whereas, the College Board's National Merit Scholarship Program recognizes commended students placed among the top fifty thousand students who entered the two thousand twenty-six competition by taking the two thousand twenty-four Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Commended students are being recognized for the exceptional academic promise demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the qualifying test used for program entry. Whereas, that the Westwood Regional School District Board of Education does hereby commend Kristen Doyle and Andrew Gavinco, who have been recognized as commended students in the two thousand twenty-six National Merit Scholarship Program. And, now therefore be it resolved that the Westwood Regional Board of Education hereby congratulates these students for this accomplishment, directs the secretary to include this resolution in the official minutes of the Board of Education, and directs the Superintendent of Schools to present the students with a suitable certificate of recognition.
Can I get a second? All favor?
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
The second.
Okay. Okay, motion carried.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. Velez, Denise Velez. I'm the Director of Elementary Education. I'm gonna be presenting tonight with Dr. Calderon on the twenty-four-twenty-five Spring Data. We're gonna cover several assessments that were taken by our students. We have a lot of detailed information, but we'll try to get through it as best as possible. So, we'll start off with just generally what we're reporting on tonight. So, these are the assessments that the majority of our students take. So, the NJSLA and ELA in math, that stands for the New Jersey State Learning Assessment, is taken by all of our third through fifth graders, sixth through eighth graders, and then our ninth graders. They take that in ELA and in math. Our students then in fifth, eighth, and eleventh take those two assessments plus a science assessment that assesses them on the NJSLA science standards. So, what are the, what's the purpose of these assessments? It's really to assess our students and their grade level proficiency in the content areas. It's also for us as a district, for accountability, to ensure that we are targeting instruction and meeting the needs of all of our students. And it's a growth metric, so it really does allow us to see if, how our students are growing and what interventions we need to put into place to ensure that the kids are getting what they need. So, for a refresher, for those of you who have heard this before, our, the cut score for proficiency is a seven-fifty. The lowest score that a student can get is a six-fifty, the highest is an eight-fifty. Anyone who scores a seven-fifty and above is seen as meeting or exceeding the state proficiency standards at their grade level. The differential between a Level Four and a Level Five, which is meeting and exceeding, changes every year by content. Students are scored in five different categories, so from meeting, from exceeding to meeting, approaching is students who are just getting there, and then we have our partially meeting and do not meet expectations. That's for ELA and math. The science looks a little differently. They score students in four different categories, so that's advanced proficient, proficient, near, and below. Two-hundred is the cut score for that. So, students who score two-hundred and above are seen as meeting the expectations of the grade level standards for science in that specific grade level. This really quickly is a sample of the student report. Every single child gets an individual student report. This is sent to all parents. It gives to them sub-score information detailing how they compared to their peers in the district. These are uploaded to all of the parent portals. So, this document and this presentation will be live tomorrow, so if you have a child, you can go on. These are all live links. You can click on there to see exactly how you can go into your portal to access this document, but they were sent home. So, I'm going to start with an overview of what we saw in the NJSLA ELA assessment for grades three through nine. Before I get into that, I do just wanna talk a little bit about what it is that you're going to be seeing. I think it's really important that you get some context to the assessment. So, we're going to provide the data by the district. We're also going to be providing the data by building for our elementary schools specifically. And I think it's important that you know some of the specialized programs that exist in all of our buildings, because that does tailor to the student population in each of them. So, Berkeley is our Title One building, so they get federal funds for extra assistance. Actually, Brookside this year has been titled a Title One school, but for this data, they were not. Brookside is our largest enrolled elementary school, and Brookside and Berkeley host our largest ML populations. Those are our multilingual language learners. We have George School, which hosts our autism programs, our specialized program for students with autism, and as well, they're a collaborative model, which is really quite amazing. So, our special ed teachers and our gen ed teachers work collaboratively. We don't pull students out for resource at George School. They push into the general education program and are serviced that way. Lots of research detailing the amazing benefits that has for students, and our scores will show that. George School, sorry, that was George, Washington School hosts our LLD program, so that's our students with limited language disabilities, and our self-contained program, so they have two of our specialized special ed programs in that building. We give you that information so that you have it when you're looking at the numbers. It definitely just provides a little bit more context to what you're gonna be looking at. So, what you're looking at here is our district, so grades three to nine ELA scores. We give you all of the information by category, so your Level Ones through Level Fives, and then the last two columns give you the total of our students meeting or exceeding, so those are your Level Fours and Level Fives. We have here for you all of the content by grade level, and then we also have it by state, so that you can see how we compare by state. This is like a really nice holistic view. We're gonna break down by grade and by building as well. So, I'm gonna spend like two extra seconds on this one, because the next few slides all look like this, so that you know exactly what it is that you're looking at. So, on the left-hand side of the next few slides, you're going to see the total number of students who tested and in each of the buildings, in the district, and then you'll see the number by the state as well. And then over on the right-hand side, you're going to see our bar graph where we have it by building and the percentage of students at each of the categories. That dark blue is the percentage of students who are meeting and/or exceeding. So, when you take a look at this, you have your Berkeley, Brookside, George, Washington, then we have the district cluster altogether, and then we have the state cluster. So, you could see here, third grade, this is our baseline data. These are students who have never taken the test before. It's an online test. It's a lot of testing. It's over several days. So, we use this as the baseline, and honestly, for first-time test takers, these are really great numbers. So, you could see, we're at about sixty-six, sixty-eight percent at Berkeley, Brookside, and then an eighty-eight percent at George for first-time test takers, which is fantastic. Washington has a forty-nine percent. The number I wanna emphasize is sixty-six percent of our third graders met or exceeded grade level proficiency, which is amazing for first-time test takers. Here, you see in grade four, a little bit more of a consistency across the buildings. We're hitting those like eighty percentiles. As a district, we have seventy-six percent of our fourth graders are meeting or exceeding in ELA. And then here you have grade five. Let's look at Berkeley. We have a ninety-four percent test-taking proficiency rating there. I want you to kind of like hold on to that nugget, because when Dr. Calderon talks about math, we look at cohorts as well. So, that's grade five at Berkeley is really strong. Eighty-two percent of our fifth graders met or exceeded, which we're very proud of, and in all of these cases, we continue to supersede and outperform the state. Here you'll see grades six through eight, so the first three sections are what is happening within our district, and then we have our state data over on the side. We are actually very happy to say that this year, all of our middle school students in ELA had a seventy-plus percent proficiency. We did not see that last year. We were not able to tout that, so we are trying to find all of the wins. That's a really great statement to make about our middle school students and what they're doing in ELA. Here we have grade nine, and we can talk about this. So, if you take a look, our grade nine students, fifty-one percent of our students met or exceeded. The state average is fifty percent. So, this does not follow the trends that we've seen with our other grade levels. However, as a cohort, this grade, this is very consistent with how they've been performing across the years. A little later in the presentation, we're going to look at cohorts, and we'll be able to follow students throughout the years, and we'll look at this specific cohort, so that you could see it is quite consistent actually to their performance. And now I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Calderon to do the math.
Thank you. So, we're transitioning to mathematics now, where students would be covered from grades three to eight, as well as taking either Algebra One, Algebra Two, or geometry at the high school level, and as well as in our eighth-grade class. We'll take more look into the achievement levels, just like Mrs. Velez did for the elementary world, as well as the middle school and high school, where we're gonna see clear district strengths and weaknesses that we run onto address. So, just like in the first slide for ELA, here is the overall picture in mathematics. If you see the N, that's because the N size was less than ten, and we are legally not allowed to present on that. However, that does not mean that we had a large or small scale showing the students that did not meet. We just are not legally allowed to present on it. For example, if you look at the last two columns for the district, we did have Ns in grades eight, Algebra One for middle school, for the high school, and as a district. Once again, we did have students who did achieve it, it's just that the N size was smaller than ten. So, following the same concept as ELA, we are gonna go through grades three to five per building, as well as looking at our district performance compared to the state. So, these charts provide an individual grade and building-level detail that supports the overall narrative. We'll be using the same detailed data in our next phase of data deep dives that Mrs. Velez spoke about with specific grade-level instruction goals, but some things to highlight here as well is related to George School, which Ms. Velez did indicate that it's one of our schools that has a collab model, showing an eighty-four percent achievement in meeting and exceeding. That is literally the meeting, which is green, plus the orange, which will equal to the blue bar graph that you see above there. We also show a very strong cohort as we continue to monitor their student achievement as they progress through the collab model. Next, for grade four mathematics, we're showing, again, results that had almost one-hundred percent of our students taking the assessment. Another highlight to point is that as a district, our grade four students demonstrated sixty-nine percent achievement at the levels four and five. Additionally, George School did outperform in grade four, with Berkeley demonstrating a strong achievement results in seventy-nine percent of meeting and exceeding expectations. I do also want to point out, for the orange, which is exceeding, while you may not see it for some of the buildings, that does not mean that we did not have it, it's just the N size was small as well. Last but not least, for grade five, we are going to move on to our last grade for elementary and then go right into middle school, where we're comparing grade five to the district as well as state assessment results. Berkeley cohort for grade five also showed a strong achievement, just like they did in ELA, as Ms. Velez mentioned. Once again, Brookside, George, and Washington did have exceeding expectations, but the percentage size was small. So, once again, we're moving on to the middle school grades, where you'll see on the left-hand side, grades six to eight in mathematics, as well as compared to the state average. Once again, we did have- Once again, we did have almost a hundred percent taking the test. For grade eight, you're going to see a very small percentage. That is because students are now at this point going into a different math track. They're either going to take the Math Eight test or their Algebra One test, depending on if they're in that class for, for grade eight. But once again, we are very, very proud of the results that we saw here from middle school. Grade six clearly had a, a high percentage rate of sixty-five percent of meeting and exceeding expectations. We've been working really hard in this grade level and across grade seven and eight as well. However, that, that transition phase that we've been planning and preparing for clearly was an indication that resulted in student achievement. This slide compares the middle school Algebra One results compared to the district versus the state. So once again, we did have students who take Algebra One at the eighth grade level. It's an accelerated course. We had eighty-six percent of our students meeting and exceeding expectations. We did have a percentage of students that did exceed, but again, the N size is small, which is why you don't see that orange bar right there. But compared to the district average at fifty-two percent and the state average at thirty-eight percent. The last slide is our Algebra One students at the high school level compared to the state level. So with this slide, you will see that for our meeting and exceeding expectations, we have thirty-three percent of our students meet that. While at the district level, it was at fifty-two percent. The geometry level was at sixty-nine percent with only fifty-two students taking it. That's usually the cohort of Math Eight students that took it in eighth, excuse me, uh, grade eight students who took Algebra One in eighth grade. They transitioned to geometry by their ninth grade level, which is why we have fifty-two students identified as taking the assessment. Once again, we do want to point out the state average was at thirty-eight percent. We did fall under the state average, which we're going to notify, not notify, excuse me. We're going to speak about more of our intervention practices and we're going to look deeper into that for what it looks like for our mathematics program. So moving forward, we do have science. Once again, as Mrs. Velez indicated, there are four different levels. Students only take this assessment in grades five, eight, and eleven. Just like in ELA math, this is given to students. This table right here is just an overview of the next generation science standards that students are assessed on, focusing on how students apply to scientific knowledge and their practices. This chart provides an overview, just like in ELA math, where they're comparing all four levels to the state average. Once again, you want to focus your eyes on the last two columns where we're compared not only to the state, but as well as levels three and four that are averaged together. So for grade five, we show forty-two percent of our students achieving expectations. Grade eight is at twenty-eight percent and grade eleven is at forty-five percent. I do want to point out that as we continue to analyze this data, the grade that was quite typical across the county and the state based on our research was grade eight for New Jersey. For another overview of our grade five, eight, and eleven scores, we just wanted to give a more of a picture to what we were indicating as far as our achievement. So once again, you will see that almost one hundred percent of our students did sit and take the assessment in grades five, eight, and eleven, as well as what the achievement levels look like. So the colors were a bit different for ELA math, but if you look at the green, advanced proficient, and the yellow, if you add those two together, you will get the orange, which is a proficient and advanced, oh, excuse me, proficient results. Last but not least, we're going to compare our elementary buildings. So you'll see once again Berkeley, Brookside, George, and Washington versus the state, as well as the district average. Drilling down into these specific grades, we're looking at our students who have built a strong foundation in their scientific knowledge. We do want to point out that forty-two percent of our grade five students did score in the levels three and four, which was about twelve points higher than the average state of thirty percent. We also see a very strong particular strength for our students in the sense-making practices. That's not indicated in the bar graph, but we wanted to highlight that the student's ability to analyze data and models was very strong and nearly doubled the state average based on our assessment results. Last but not least, we're moving on to grades eight and eleven. So once again, despite the overall proficiency, we will continue to focus on the small cohort of students who scored below proficiency level as indicated in the first bar for grade eight and for grade eleven. As I said before, it, it's really important to point out that grade eleven is a trend that we're seeing across the state, as well as the county, as Ms. Velez and I continue to have meetings with various school districts in Bergen County. We are all seeing that the grade eight tends to struggle, as well as you can see in the state results, that ends up being the lowest for, for everyone.
So the next group of slides to show you how we really do dissect the data, and we actually have to do legally present on it also, but it's very good information. We look at the data by subgroups and by different demographics. So we have to report and look at data by race, by gender, and by specialized programs that students are enrolled in. So we're going to give you a little bit of that information. It just goes to show that we try to slice the data in multiple ways to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. So the first subgroup that we're going to be looking at right now is by race. So what you can see here is we did it district-wide. So in the world of ELA, what you're looking at here is a bar graph that shows you how our different demographic groups performed. Again, going off of what Dr. Calderon said before, if we have a group size under ten, we cannot give that information because it becomes identifiable. So when we look at something like this, some of the observations that we make is that we have sixty-plus percent of our subgroups meeting or exceeding, which is a really great thing to celebrate. However, we also want to look at some of the discrepancies, right? So you can see here, our Hispanic population at sixty-one percent is trailing behind a bit from their peers, as is our Black and African-American population in English Language Arts across the district. So we'll talk about some of the interventions. These are conversations that we have when we do deep data dive analyses as to what it is that's going on and what more we can do to service our students. Here, you're looking at that same thing, but in math by subgroups. And again, you could see that we have our subgroups of Hispanics and the Black African-Americans who are underperforming a bit when compared to their peers. So it's very consistent in ELA and math, however, we do see a dip more, more of a dip in math than we do when compared to ELA. Here we're looking at science. So when you look at the bar graph here, I mean, we had a lower number of students that are meter, meeting and or exceeding. But we see our biggest gap in science with our Hispanic population at twenty-six percent when compared to their peers. And this is in grade five, but it also exists in the next slide. As you can see this, very similar gap exists at grades eight and eleven with our science testing. So these are the parts of, these are the types of conversations that we bring back to the teachers. We talk about them. We look at data. We look at student performance. We look at student needs, what services are getting, what more they can get, to make sure that we're trying to close that gap. Overall, that's really the general goal.
The next program that we're going to analyze or present the data on is related to program comparison, which means that we're looking at four different subgroups specifically. Any student identified as either economically disadvantaged, students with special needs, students who may have a 504, and any student identified as a multilingual learner. So once again, following the same trend that Mrs. Velez did for the previous slides, due to the test size being small for grades three to five and nine, we wanted to combine the data and just give a holistic overview for grade three to nine for any student who took the NJ SLA in ELA. As you can see here, we look at certain trends, specifically focusing on our special needs population, as well as students in the ML category, showing trends below the entire subgroup, other subgroups, as well as our general population. So we do bring that back to our table as Ms. Velez said regarding what our focus and intervention plans will look like. Moving now on to math, same concept. We have four categories. Students who are economically disadvantaged, special needs, 504, and ML. Once again, we're seeing the same trend with our special needs population and ML population, testing below our, our other subgroups. Identified as forty-three percent is economically disadvantaged, as well as our students who may have a 504, testing at forty-eight percent of meeting or exceeding expectations for any NJ SLA mathematics assessment. Last but not least, we're going to look at now science for grades five, eight, and eleven. Once again, we have the four subgroups and we're still seeing the same trends. Same concept we're going to point out, special needs population, the 504. We did have growth in the ML world, but once again, the N size was too small to populate out publicly, as well as looking at our economically disadvantaged, where grade five and grade eleven tend to trend equitably at thirty-two and thirty-one percent of meeting or exceeding expectations on the science assessment. So to keep the trend going, we're now going to do a gender comparison for NJ SLA, ELA, math, either Algebra One, Algebra Two, and Geometry, as well as NJ SLA Science. So based on our results for grades three to five, as we shift our focus on this disaggregated data, the slide presents an overview of all three grades broken down by gender. But as you can see here, some of our positive trends that we are seeing is that our female population consistently outperformed their male peers in meeting and exceeding expectations, as well as the visual data clearly highlights a gap between the achievement levels of our male and female students. So this gap mostly is pronounced in grades four or five as a common trend, where we are seeing highest percentage of males in approaching or partially meeting expectation categories. As well as in grades six to nine, as we continue to look at this demographic performance for gender, results for our middle school and high school students across this were broken down. As you can see with high achievement for grades six to nine, as our female student population consistently outperformed our male population and their peers and the student of, of meeting and exceeding expectations. Where that pattern resulted in looking at a credit for the instruction in our middle and high school performances, whether it's reading books, outlining their social interactions and things of that nature. So we're continuing to focus on that area specifically with the male population and identifying some focus concerns meeting, whether it's course descriptions, more reading materials that will align more to their needs. We want to underscore that that is a targeted reading intervention strategy that we are focusing our concerns around. Last but not least, we also have a math NJ SLA gender comparison for grades three to five. In mathematics, the gender achievement gap is much narrower, narrower than we do see in ELA. In fact, some grade levels, particularly in grade three, our male students demonstrated equal or slightly higher rates of our meeting and exceeding expectations compared to their female peers. However, a closer look at the data, especially at the students as we move towards grade four, may reveal a slight shift where male students maintain a consistent edge in the achievement results. As we move on to grades six through eight for NJ SLA mathematics, we are still seeing that same trend of the upper grades where the data of our middle and high school mathematics results are consistent, showing equity in achievement. Our male population in grade six demonstrated slightly higher rates of meeting and exceeding expectations compared to their female peers, whereas in grade seven, both female and male students is much narrower. As we look at our Algebra One comparison, because we do offer it in both the middle school and high school, the students who take Algebra One in middle school demonstrated strong equitable results, showing in a very small to no gender gap in achievement. This cohort is highly successful and ready for geometry, as we are anticipating for them to roll into. Conversely, we have the high school cohort taking Algebra One, showing a more significant gender gap, often with males achieving higher proficiency when compared to our middle school grades and a low, lower overall rate of meeting or exceeding expectations as previously noted. As we move on to our gender comparison for science, once again, in only grades five, eights, and eleven, this last slide is really looking at the performance across all three grade levels. Whereas you can see our male students outperformed their female peers in meeting or exceeding expectations for all three grades, as well as a focus group is for grade eleven as a common trend, that we see a gap between the achievement levels of our male and female students. The research also shows by the time they do get to high school between a female and male, they tend to go on a different science track as well, which is also indicated in our data here. I'm going to pass it back to Mrs. Velez, who's going to do a three and four-year comparison trend.
So this next series of slides are actually my favorites, so let me geek out for a little bit because I think that this is where we get a lot of information about how students are growing. We're going to, for the first time in a very long time, I think only maybe like the second time in my entire career, we have enough data that we can look across years at some data, so that's, that's fun stuff. Okay, so just bear with me. I get excited about this stuff. So to have four years' worth of data in the state of New Jersey with the state is quite impressive. And so we're looking here at four years' worth of data with the same test, NJ SLA assessment. And you can see this is like a very holistic way of looking at it. One way to analyze this data would be by grade level, right? So you can look at grade three across the years. Let's take, for example, the blue over at the end where you can see twenty-two to twenty-five. So in twenty-twenty-two, seventy percent of our third grade students met or exceeded. And then there were sixty-three, sixty-five, sixty-six, so fairly consistent across the four years. So that's one way to look at this data. I do want to point out, if you take a look at our grade six, because that's something really nice to look at. So at grade six, we have a really significant jump, right? So in twenty-twenty-two, you have fifty-nine percent of the students metering or exceeding. That bumps up to sixty-five, sixty-seven, but then we have this really nice big bump to eighty percent this past year, so that's worth celebrating. This is great for us to look at our curriculum, like how is our curriculum meeting the needs of the students and the standards, right? So to look at it by grade band is one way to analyze it. However, another way to analyze it is on this next slide. And this is by cohort, and this is actually my favorite way of looking at it because what you're doing here is you're not following just third grade, third grade, third grade. You're following a specific group of students from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade. How are they growing? Are they consistent? Are they dipping, right? So we tried to kind of like color coordinate it for you here so that you can follow one of the grade levels. So for example, that light yellowish one, right? So our grade six past, this past year, now seventh graders, had an eighty percent achievement rate, meeting or exceeding. And if you take a look, as fifth graders, that was seventy-nine percent, as fourth graders, seventy-eight, and then seventy. They're pretty consistent, right, like where, where they are, and we see growth. That's that growth metric that I discussed earlier for the, when we talk about the purpose of these assessments. Now, I do want to point out, if you take a look at grade eight, so now, like when you put those two points together, right? So our grade eight last year had a seventy percent increase. Pretty consistent with where they are, but just take a look, when you look this way, there's a twenty percent increase in the grade eight, the way that we tackled our curriculum, right? So there's two ways to look at this, which I think is really interesting because you can have a lot of conversations, and these are the conversations that we're having with teachers right now. We're taking this metric and we're coupling that with all other data, internal data that we collect, to really kind of make sure that we're getting a really nice picture of the students and how they're progressing. So we have this same thing in math here, so you can look across the years, and so you have your holistic view here. So let's take a look again at grade six because I think that this is striking. If we take a look at grade six just as a grade itself, not the specific students, but over the last four years, we have another really big bump, right? So we were looking at forty-six percent meeting or exceeding back in twenty-two, sixty-five percent just last year. So there's great growth happening within. Those are the discussions where we're looking at data, we're looking at the curriculum, and we're making sure that they're aligning. This next slide shows you now by cohort in the district for math. And so we did the same little color coordinating here. You see some things like our yellow group, right, like our grade six actually dipped from grade five. So that's like a conversation that typically happens. However, that dip is not as low as we've seen in past years, moving from fifth to sixth grade. So that, that gap is slowly closing. Still a dip, but it's still growth when we look at what typically happens between fifth and sixth grade. Is that my Siri talking? Sorry, my Siri doesn't understand me. So that's that, but I did then want to look at grade eight. So our grade eight actually in twenty-four, twenty-five, there's two boxes in red because as Dr. Calderon said before, the students can split in the math course that they take at that grade level. So while our eighth, our students who took the eighth grade test had a thirty percent meeting or exceeding, those who took the Algebra One had an eighty-six percent. So you look at that, there's this division, but take a look at them in the year as seventh graders. They had a fifty-one percent in passing rate, and as sixth graders, forty-three. So this is that cohort that I spoke about a little earlier where I said, just hold on to this nugget because it's going to come back, just to show you that it's, it's consistent with what we've been seeing with that cohort of students. However, there is still success in this and growth because if you take a look at that grade eight with thirty percent, grade eight last year, with the kids that were in that year that divided, had a twenty-five percent meeting or exceeding. So we still grew, so there's a lot of growth within all of this data, and those are the types of conversations that we're having. This next one shows you a four-year comparison in science. This one we can't do cohorts for because the way, the gaps between the years of assessments, right? So from fifth to eighth grade, that, we just can't connect that. But if you take a look over here, I, what I think was interesting in this is if you look at the very bottom where it talks, shows you all, we can see that in twenty-two, we had thirty-four percent of our students meeting or exceeding. you all, we can see that in '22, we had 34% of our students meeting or exceeding. We took a dip in '23, down to 29%, but then we bumped back up to 37, and then we bumped up again to 38%. So a win is a win, right? So those are the types of things that we're looking at. Where are we seeing growth? Where are we seeing progress?
Thank you for your geekiness. That was great. I swear, we're almost done. We're now going to shift our gears towards the Dynamic Learning Map. Very, very small data, very, very small population, but we do have to report out on it. So it's actually called the DLM assessment, the Dynamic Learning Map results. It's for any student that's identified that has an IEP. It's truly only 1% of our population, if not smaller, who take this alternative assessment, and they do not sit for NJSLA. So once again, very small data. We actually cannot report out like I do with the bar graphs, and Ms. Velez shows all the data charts and things of that nature. The only thing we can say is that there are four levels, emerging, approaching, at target, advanced. We had 17 students who tested in grades three to 11. That was three more than we had last year. Once again, based on all those categories, the N size tends to be small, because every student who is assessed in these areas, they are getting identified as either emerging as a performance level, or approaching, or at a target, so therefore, it's very sporadic. So the only thing we can say is, students identified as emerging in math, ELA, and science, as a total, was 19. Once again, we tried to do a three-year comparison. We do have the data, but the N size was too small to report out on it. As Ms. Velez noted in the beginning of the presentation, once this goes live tomorrow, those links are actually clickable, so if you need to learn more about a DLM assessment, and you wanted to just get more information, you're more than welcome to review that. But at this point in time, that's all we can say about the DLM assessment. So last but not least, we are going to now speak about the interventions and achievements that we are looking towards, based on all of our data results that we presented tonight. So first, we're going to look at the notable achievements for mathematics. While the previous slides did show our success grade by grade, this slide summarizes the most significant achievements across our entire K-12 mathematics program. So we are seeing results of our sustained effort for our impact of instructional model. Student achievement continues to increase as we enter year four of our collab model, as we indicated in our previous slides, confirming that our focus of our shared instructional practice is working specifically with our subgroup population for special education. One exceptional grade level, as Ms. Velez indicated in the three and four-year trend, is grade six performance. We saw a remarkable 22-point jump in percentage of students meeting exceeding over the previous years. The strength is also sustained by grades six to seven cohort increased by 6%, as well as our students excelling in complex work for geometry, where we showed 60% of achievement versus the state at 56%. Once again, we wanted to highlight that our grade five students also modeled stability, consistently demonstrating high results in meeting and exceeding expectations, as well as we showed some trends between grade six, grade seven, and even our geometry meeting over the past three years. Another notable treatment, but related to English Language Arts, clearly, our program shows a powerful story of consistency and significant cohort growth, related to specifically our grade eight students demonstrating a remarkable improvement with a 20-point increase in proficiency, bringing them to 70% achievement. This performance places us at a 13-point average above the state. Our grade six students as well also showed phenomenal progress, achieving a 21-point jump in proficiency. This success is driven by models like our collaborative teaching model, that we also indicated for our grades three to five, specifically at George, demonstrating a direct correlation between instructional practices that we need to bring back with other grades for student achievement. Our elementary program shows strong signs of consistency as well, overall, from grades three to five, where they're able to sustain and maintain the percentage of achievement of meeting and exceeding expectations. Our last notable achievement is related to science, for grades, again, five, eight, and 11, where our students showed rates significantly higher than some of the state averages. Our district-wide achievement for scoring proficient and advanced proficient is 38%, which is decisively 11-point lead over the state average. Once again, we want to highlight grade 11, as well as our grade five, where our high school science program continues to grow, and our students are showing 45% achievement. That might not seem like a large gain, but once again, as we continue to assess this state assessment with our teachers and change our instructional practices, every gain is definitely a win. Specifically for our grade five students in our building, a strong foundation. Once again, they're only tested in grade five, so we don't see any results from grades three to four, but as we noted before, their performance in sense-making practices, which is a very, very strong domain in the next-generation science standards, indicate that we are showing that they're applying their scientific modeling reasonably more effectively. Now, we are going to move on to our intervention practices, based on ELA, math, and science, as well as the other subgroup population. So again, I'm not going to read every bullet point that's indicated here on the presentation, but we do want to point out that one specific highlight that we did do is our intensive literacy support, which we did secure two reading specialists to service students who require additional individualized reading instruction, targeting the core of reading deficiencies identified by the assessment, as well as we are very, very proud to follow the K-5 world. We're in middle school, we were able to this year, as well as pilot part of it last year, our academic support lab, which we call ASL, where students were welcome to join and get extra help, either during lunch, during recess, before school, after school. This year, we're continuing that as a year-two pilot, where we actually have two math teachers who are pushing into the classrooms to provide extra support for those students, indicating the trends that we are seeing in our data results. We're continuing to use Title II funds to specifically invest in our professional development for our teachers, because, let's face it, they are the ones in the classrooms five days a week. We are also continuing to use modeling, excuse me, data monitoring. As Dr. McQueeney pointed out in his opening notes, we were able to create Title I data coordinators for the secondary world, for grades six to eight and nine to 12. Those teachers specifically monitor the data, week after week, month after month, for every year, and they continue to look at those trends, report back to the parents, report back to the students. So we are having more of a hands-on approach at live, real-time, once we are seeing the students when they approach our academic support model. Moving on to additional intervention strategies related to race, ML, special education, and we actually put another column here for others, just to show the community what we are using federal funds towards. So one of the proactive identifiers that Mrs. Velez and I have been working on with our administrators and our teachers, is implementing the WEADA model assessment earlier in the school year to quickly identify students and service their needs. WEADA is actually the program that our ML department uses, and they really do a deep data dive based on the assessment results that they get through that program. We are also enhancing our professional development with our staff through PD workshops. We're actually continuing our collaboration with PASCAC this year, as well as with Northern Valley. So Northern Valley and our teachers work together, where they get to sign up for any PD that they host at their district site. It's literally 15 minutes down the road, and we have over, what, 100 sessions that our teachers have signed up for this school year, where we're using federal funds to support that and provide them with more professional development. We are also maintaining dedicated academic structures, indicating that intervention periods for K to five, academic support lab for six to eight, and language arts lab for nine to 12. We also increased our behavioral support by contracting a full-time district behavior, so we're very proud of that. We're continuing that model, as well as housing insight at the middle school and high school areas. It's a very long presentation. We're now going to kick it back to the board if they have any questions, if you want to come back up to these, but we thank you for your time in listening to us tonight.
Ms. Calderon.
Thank you, Dr. Calderon and Ms. Velez.
Thank you, Ms. Velez. I'm sorry, did you tell me to go ahead and speak, or?
Yeah, no, we're just going to acknowledge you. Good. Thank you, Dr. Calderon and Ms. Velez. We have a question. Ms. Cooper?
No questions. I just wanted to say, I've crunched data before, and that looked like a real bear. You had to put so much information together. You had to come through with what were the trends, what were the themes, and all of that, and, I mean, great job. I can't imagine that it was easy, and probably took you a couple of months.
Thank you. That's the abridged version. There's additional 20 slides that you will see tomorrow on our district website.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Azalina?
I would just like to echo that. That was an incredible amount of information, and thank you both always. You give it to us in such digestible ways, where we can really understand and see the work that you're putting into, and see the, you know, our district getting better and better. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. It's the ELA and the math, so we try to play off on that.
Is anybody else? Ms. Peck?
I just wanted to say that we really appreciate both of you, but also our teachers and our admin, who are working closely with you. And I know we sit in the curriculum meetings, and we ask really hard questions about how we're going to fix this, what steps are we taking, and there's always great conversations, looking at the data and how we can drive the change. So we appreciate all of you, the teachers, the admin, and both of you.
Ms. Mountain, thank you, Ms. Peck.
Working with you on the curriculum committee was just a drop in the bucket. Thank you so much for putting all of that in one place. Would probably take me 10 years to absorb it all, but thank you very much. You did a fabulous job, and thank you.
I'll echo what everybody said. Thank you, and it's, again, especially what Ms. Peck said. First, it takes a strategy and a plan, and then it takes the passion to implement it. So we're really impressed. We feel the momentum. We see the momentum. We hear all the questions, and we hear all the answers. As Ms. Mountain said, tough questions, we throw at you, and you always have an answer, and you always have a plan. We appreciate you. I do have a question about, does anybody else? Can you expand a little bit more on mathematics and some of the intervention, and some of the things that you presented?
Sure. So again, math tends to be the redhead stepchild. We tend to get into our debates regarding this, and it is a trend across the state that students do perform lower than they would in ELA. However, I'm so proud of the math work that the middle school specifically has been doing, especially with the George coming in as a collab model. Thank you, Rosado and Dr. McQueeney, for signing off on the number of POs that I requested to put in whiteboard space. So that's actually one prime example that our teachers requested, where we've been in year two, three of Building Thinking Classroom?
Year two for some schools.
Year two for some schools, but getting those students at their seats, to walk around, to converse, to have discourse, to actually critically think about their math concepts, to actually look at somebody else's work on the board, versus just looking at a paper sitting at their desk, clearly is significant, and our results do show that. So our teachers have been embracing the Building Thinking Classroom model. It's a fantastic book. They are going to PD. We do have a vendor coming in, which is provided through Northern Valley, but just to get the children out of their seats, they tend to be behind a screen 24/7, whether it's their cellphone, or a computer, or a TV at home, or whatever, or a PlayStation, or whatever you want to call those gaming model. I'm too old for this at this point, but the point is, they're away from it at that point, and they're able to have that discourse mathematically and explain their procedures, which is clearly showing in our achievement results.
Thank you for bringing that up again. I remember when we first heard that and put it in the plan, and conceptually, I liked it, but now I'm seeing it. My daughter is a fifth grader at Brookside. It's been implemented there. She loves it. She loves the interaction with the other students, and I think, you know, the numbers do show it, and will show it even more and more. We're tapping different methods or ways of learning for different learners, and love it.
Thank you for pointing that out, because Ms. Velez did a great job with Brookside, specifically as piloting it for Building Thinking Classroom, and then we're expanding upon it with the other elementary buildings to have that type of discourse.
Awesome. Again, does anybody have anything more? Full board support of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Next item will be agenda, public, I mean, next item is public forum. Pursuant to Board Policy 0167, public participation in board meetings. During this first public forum, district residents and staff are invited to address the Board of Education on agenda items specifically listed on this evening's agenda. Board Policy 0167 requires that individuals sign the speaker's list, giving name, municipality of residence, and the specific agenda item or items on which a member of the public plans to speak, and asks that all remarks be directed to the board as a whole, not to individuals. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Although the board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered and may be discussed tonight under the appropriate agenda items, or, quote-unquote, "new business" at this meeting, at subsequent meetings under, quote-unquote, "old business," or during a board committee meeting, if appropriate. Each speaker's statement will be limited to three minutes in duration. The first public forum will be limited to 30 minutes in duration. We will now open first public forum at 8:32 PM. Would anybody like to speak? I don't see anybody coming down. Nobody's on the list? Okay. We will close the first public forum at 8:32 PM. We'll move, Ms. Peck. Can you please move motions under administrative and governance, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move Agenda Items A through G, and addendum Item H.
Second, Ms. Mountain, discussion? I know, I'm going to do that. Discussion? No. I'm also compelled and required to read aloud into the record, Ministry of Governance's motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approval be given for the following resolution. Whereas Douglas Casado, respondent, is a school official, as defined in the School Ethics Act, serving as a member of the Westwood Regional Board of Education, located in Bergen County, at all times relevant to the matter at issue in the above-captioned matter, and whereas by decision dated June 17, 2025, the School Ethics Commission found that respondent failed to comply with the annual training mandate deadline of December 31, 2024, in violation of NJSA 18A 12-33, and NJAC 6A 28-4.1, and whereas the commission recommended that the Commissioner of Education impose a penalty of removal, with such removal to become effective immediately upon adoption by the Commissioner of Education. However, if respondent completed training before the Commissioner of Education adopted a final decision, then the commission recommended that the Commissioner of Education, in lieu of removal, impose a 30-day suspension, with such suspension to become effective immediately upon adoption by the Commissioner of Education, provided respondent provided written notice of successful completion of the training requirement, and whereas the respondent did not complete training following the issuance of the Commission's June 17, 2025 decision, and whereas respondent filed an appeal of the Commission's decision with the Commissioner of Education, and whereas by decision dated September 26, 2025, and because respondent refused to complete training following the issuance of the Commission's decision, the Commissioner of Education adopted the Commission's findings, finding of a violation of NJSA 18A 12-33, and also concurred with the penalty recommended by the commission, and ordered the respondent's removal from the board, and whereas NJAC 6A 28-9.11D provides a penalty of censure, suspension, or removal. A resolution shall be adopted at the Commission's next meeting, following the Commissioner's imposition of the sanction, and the resolution shall be read at the board's next public meeting, following adoption by the commission, shall be posted in such places as the board posts its public notices for no less than 30 days, shall be published online on the district's website, if available, for no less than 30 days, and the reading of the resolution shall be memorialized. days, and the reading of the resolution shall be memorialized in the board's meeting minutes. And once approved, a copy of the minutes shall be forwarded to the commission. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the commission adopts this resolution stating that respondent is hereby removed as a school official for having been found to violate NJSA 18A 12-33 and NJAC 6A 28-4.1. End. Be it further resolved that the board is ordered to read this resolution at its next regularly-scheduled public meeting following the commission's adoption, to post it in such places as the board posts its public notices for a period of 30 days, and to publish it online on the district's website, if available, for no less than 30 days. End. Be it further resolved, the board shall provide the commission with the minutes once adopted from the meeting at which it reads the within resolution. Thus concludes that resolution. To vote on it? Because that's just done. Motion?
Roll call?
Roll call.
Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mountain?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Pertuz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Now moving on to personnel. Ms. Azalina, can you please move the motions, personnel, items A through Z?
Yes, I would like to move Agenda Items A through Y with Agenda M Z.
Can I get a second? Mr. Pertuz? Discussion? Ms. Martin?
Yes, I just want to ask a clarifying question to be very clear about item T. We are only voting on the advisor for this club, not voting in the club. Is that correct? There was some confusion from the community, and just want to be sure that we're very clear on what we're voting on.
Sure. Yes, you're correct. The club has been approved by the district and building administration, and the board is approving the advisor for the club. Because it is a new club, it's a volunteer position, and if it gains traction and becomes popular, it follows our process to ultimately become a paid advisor position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Rosado, give a roll call, please.
Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mountain?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Pertuz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado.
Excuse me one minute, Mr. Garcia. I'm afraid I just need to excuse myself for the remainder of the meeting. I apologize.
Okay. Moving along. Finance and Facility, Mr. Pertuz, can you please move the motions in Finance and Facility?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to move the Agenda Items A through AA in Finance and Facilities.
Can I get a second? Ms. Martin? Mr. Rosado, roll call, please.
Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mountain?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Pertuz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Curriculums and Programs, Ms. Peck, can you please move the motions in Curriculum and Programs?
I'd like to move Agenda Items A through C under Curriculum and Programs.
Second? Ms. Perrine? Discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Rosado, give a roll call.
Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mountain?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Pertuz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Policies, Ms. Azalina, can you please move the motions in Policy?
Yes, I would like to move Agenda Items A through B.
Second? Mr. Pertuz? Seeing none? Mr. Rosado?
Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mountain?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Pertuz?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. That concludes all of the motions. We will now go to public forum number two, during the second public forum, on any topics specifically addressed in this agenda, or on any other questions, comments, or concerns that may be in respect to the operations of their schools. Board Policy 0167 requires that individuals sign the speakers list, giving name and municipality of residence, and asks that all remarks be directed to the board as a whole, not to individuals. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. The board asks that during this second forum opportunity, public speakers adhere to the same guidelines, follow the same practices, and extend the same courtesies and decencies, as with the first public forum. Each speaker's statement will be limited to three minutes in duration. The second public forum will be limited to 30 minutes. We will now open the public session at 8:42 PM. Would anybody like to speak? Hello, young lady? Can you please state your name and place of residence, town?
My name is Teigen, and I live in Westwood.
Excellent. Move a little bit more into the microphone, because, trust me, we really want to hear you. Thank you.
Today, I would like to introduce the idea of Tech Exploring Club, inspired by the Tech Bandits, a program that empowers students to learn by exploring real-world technology through curiosity, creativity, and collaboration. The goal of Tech Explorers is to spark students' interest in stem and emerging technology through hands-on projects. Based learning members will have the chance to experiment, build, and problem-solve while developing practical skills in areas such as coding, robotic 3D printing, game, digital artifacts intelligence, oh, artifact intelligence, and the interest of things. Like the Tech Bandits, this club will emphasize learning by doing and encouraging students to explore how technology impacts their world and how they can use it to make a difference. Hosting a tech club would be enchant the school's stem curriculum and strengthen critical thinking and teamwork, and prepare students for future opportunities in technology and invitation, and while giving them a fun, supportive space to test the ideas, collaborate, grow, and innovate. I would love to have this in the middle school.
Thank you so much. Ms. Martin, I am so, I'm breaking from protocol because I am so proud of you. I never thought you would need a microphone, but it looks good on you. Thank you so much. Would anybody else like to speak? Ms. Azalina? Wait, hold on. Does anybody else, public session, like to speak? Seeing? Yeah, that was, Dr. McQueenie just said under his breath, that was a mic drop, and I'd have to agree with that. So we are going to close the public session.
Excuse me. That was my favorite public comment I have ever had the privilege of listening to sitting on this day, is thank you for coming, thank you for sharing your very well-put-together and thought-out ideas with us. We appreciate them, and we love, love hearing our students come and give us these amazing ideas. Also, I love you. Okay.
Thank you. So now, we will officially close out the public session number two at 8:46 PM. Mr., Dr. McQueenie, do you have any answers or questions?
No questions. I think you rocked it. What I need you to do is go see Mrs. Tamburi at the middle school and bring your proposal. The other thing that you have to go find is one of our awesome middle school teachers that's willing to be the advisor for your club, and I can think of a million of them. That would be awesome to do it. But you go find that, talk to Mrs. Tamburi, and she'll help walk through the process. But you've done the heavy work already, you've got a fantastic idea, all of the boxes check. Is it good for kids? Yes. Does it help education? Yes. And is it cool? Nailed it. So take all that, go see Ms. Tamburi, and I think that we might see something on an agenda in the future.
I think we're ready to get out of here, but we do have to ask, is, anybody have any old business they want to bring to the table? I don't see any hands. Does anybody have any new business they want to discuss? Seeing no new business? I think we're going to move to adjournment. Can somebody move us, take us out? Ms. Peck?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I have a second? Ms. Perrine, thank you very much. Good night, everyone. Ms. Martin?
Awesome.